The council hereby called to order for February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Here.
Alderman Denell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville. Alderman Hartburns.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderman Lauchy.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Mayor Irvin.
Present. Please rise as we have a moment of silence in honor of our active service men and service women and our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the pledge. And tonight, we're gonna have Alderman Bug with the Ninth Ward introduce our Troop Five-Zero-Zero- Seven-Four from Gomber Elementary. And we're gonna ask you guys to lead the pledge for us. And we'll be introduced by Alderman Bug. And then it'll be followed by an invocation led by Pastor Janice Donaldson of Everlasting Word who will be introduced by Mr. Clayton Mohammed. So, moment of silence. Alderman Bug?
By Troop Five-Zero-Zero-Seven-Four from Gomber Elementary School, we have fantastic scout troops all over the city engaging in projects to help our city. And they're gonna be talking to us a little bit later about one of the projects they're gonna be doing. Girls, please lead us in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. You did a great job. Mr. Mohammed?
Leading us in invocation tonight is Pastor Janice Donaldson of Everlasting Word Church, one of the top four remarkable women of Chicagoland. And we'll explain what that means during the presentation section.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for blessing this city of Aurora. Lord God, bless every official, Lord God, our emergency crews as they go out, Lord God. Let your blessings and your grace be upon them in the name of Jesus, Lord God. Father, this is a city of lights and let it shine greatly, Lord God, in the darkness, Lord God, that people will see that this is a blessed city, Father. And we thank you, Lord. Let the plans that you have for this city to go forth, Lord God. Let it grow, Lord, and bear good fruit in the name of Jesus. We pray for peace in our city. And Lord God, we thank you that you are the true and only God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Donaldson. Is there motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, February eleventh? Moved by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there motion to approve minutes of the Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty special city council meeting? Moved by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there motion to approve the appointment of the Sergeant of the Arms for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hartburns. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Mohammed, do we have any presentations for this evening?
Yes, sir, we do. We're honoring our, those who left the pledge of allegiance tonight and the invocation, beginning with our young ladies from Troop Five-Zero-Zero-Seven-Four, the American come down, and more than I, Alderman Edward Bug. These young ladies are fifth graders, Gomber Elementary School, who are already serving the community in a number of ways. We generally at this time kind of share those ways, but because they're here to participate in the civic participation part of their coursework, they have signed up to speak during the public section and will be addressing the council officially for their three minutes. Prior to that, that's awesome, right? (Applause). Prior to that, customary, we have young leaders here, we certainly want to honor them. And tonight, we present the mayor's award of service to the young ladies of Troop Five-Zero-Zero- Seven-Four, Gomber Elementary. We ask that they come down as we call their name. Let's give a round of applause to Bella De La Rosa. Dylan Johnson. Marion Martin. You can stay up there, Bella. Lindsay Palais. Celia Snyder. And Summer Steinbach. And you know, our troops couldn't work without the work of the troop leaders and their parents. We're gonna call down our three troop leaders. Let's give them a big round of applause. Katie De La Rosa. Kimberly Johnson and Jennifer Steinbach. Big round of applause, Troop Five-Zero-Zero-Seven-Four, Gomber Elementary. We have another presentation, but we have a video to accompany that, Mayor, that will take a few minutes. WGN News made a call out for people to nominate the most remarkable woman that they know. Difference makers that inspire, that motivate, that uplift the hearts and souls of people. This is WGN's, this year, two thousand and twenty Most Remarkable Woman of Chicagoland contest. After going through hundreds, they tell me eight hundred nominations, WGN chose four top finalists for the Chicagoland. And one of those top four is Aurora Zone Pastor Janice Donaldson. Everlasting Word Church, the finalist for the year, this year's contest will be announced March sixth. But we know she's already a winner here in the city of Aurora beyond. Let's take a look at her story.
Losing yourself, you know? I want them to come out of what they've been trapped in.
So much, so much hurt, so much pain, so many things just to deal with.
They've been carrying something for such a long time.
A lot of them are forgetting this come because of deep hurt and rejection and...
I was created with purpose, to teach them that you don't have to be like that. You don't have to live like you in a prison.
Healing comes in many forms.
You gotta look at what are you doing to cause the problem, you know?
Amen.
Here, it's around the table, and it's little, oh, a church.
It's really personal. It's really one-on-one.
Pastor Donaldson calls it sister-sister roundtable.
I came in ninety-eight, and I've been here ever since. For some reason, it just, I felt the love here.
Sometimes we think we're all alone in this, and she showed different.
She has helped so many women in our community, including myself.
I came from abusive family. I went into abusive marriage. And when I came in here, I was torn out.
I was in a shelter for abused women with two small children, and with her help, I am now married to a wonderful man and have a beautiful home. The things that we have learned from her is life changing.
Everybody that comes through the door, she loves.
That same love she put on us, we give back to the people that come through the door.
But then you begin to open up this relationship, and if you want it, you can have it.
Not only is she a writer, but she's a great teacher.
So, I'm always some volunteer, gave away some agency.
She taught me a lot. There's understanding, there's comfort in this house.
You lived here and you found this place?
Yes.
Like, tell me about it. Maybe you just pull up on this and...
Yeah, I see. I want the women to experience things. I want them to come out of what they've been trapped in. So, Psalm twenty-three is my favorite song talking about the shepherd. Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow pit, I will fear no people. Surely goodness and love will follow me all the days of my life. She encourages, she encourages deeply, and she wants the women to be the best they can. My mission for the women's ministry was to be able to teach women, our younger children women, to have a relationship with the Lord, first of all, and to love themselves, to love their community. And that's how change come in.
You always come away with something.
To have joy, to have peace, to have, we have a lot of that.
Yeah, my mother's seven children. They're always there. I wasn't feeling lonely.
Okay.
Anybody that comes through this story, they know that there is love here.
I was, was, was...
Jesus.
But now, I have found.
Pastor Donaldson lost count years ago. Of all the women who've come through, well, that's the thing, the work of heart, it can't be measured in numbers, just the imprint left behind.
When we get to see the changes that color your life and to see that they are saying, you know, they bring joy, to know that they have love.
Ladies and gentlemen, big round of applause. The First Lady and the Pastor of Everlasting Word Church, one of WGN's Remarkable Women of Two Thousand and Twenty, Pastor Janice Donaldson, tonight receiving the Mayor's Award of Excellence. And he'll read. And a special shout-out to the Senior Pastor and her husband, Bishop Jeff Donaldson, as well. As the women of City Council come down to greet her.
It is my pleasure to read this Mayor's Award of Excellence for such an excellent woman. The Mayor's Award of Excellence is honorably presented to Pastor Janice M. Donaldson for your decades of service to Aurora and for uplifting, inspiring, and empowering women and families in our community. You are a woman of faith and fortitude who has shown others how to be the same. Thank you for your leadership. You make Aurora proud. Go ahead, and then we'll take a picture. Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. I have so much gratitude in my heart for what God is doing in my life at this time. And I would like to encourage anyone that if you're focused, keep going towards that dream, keep persevering, and you will be able to have whatever it is that you desire. You know, just don't give up. I never would have thought, you know, recognition or anything like that, just going forth, doing what I believe God has given me to do. And, but at the proper time and at the right season, God, He blesses. And I just want to encourage everyone, women especially, to continue to go forth with your dream. And you can be and you can do whatever it is that is purpose in your heart, but be encouraged.
Mayor, we have one final presentation. I do say when I, when we reached out to the Donaldsons, I reached out through Bishop. And he says, "I want to say yes, that we're available, but after forty-two years of marriage, I know I better check with her first." So, we're glad they could be here with us this evening. Tonight, as we celebrate Black History Month and moving right into next week's Women History Month in March, what an amazing transition and segue you provide for us, Pastor Donaldson. But tonight, the mayor presents his annual Black History Month proclamation. And we are joined by members of the City of Aurora's African-American Heritage Advisory Board. If they can please join us with Chairman Kasra Walts. Joe Grissin, joined by Cam, Sandra Harrison, Sabina Thompson, Linda Blakemore, and Deborah Dos Johnson. Come on down. Round of applause for the African-American Heritage Advisory Board. Cam said not tonight, next time, next time.
And also, can we recognize our alderman, who will stand with me this evening? Alderman-at-large, Sergeant Jenkins. Alderman of the Seventh Ward, our longest-serving and the first African-American alderman ever in the city of Aurora, Alderman Shakita Hartburns. And the first ever elected in Ward Nine, Alderman Edward Edward Bell. Hold on, first up here. And of course, myself, Richard Irvin, the first African-American mayor in a hundred and eighty years of this city's history. Proclamations for Black History Month, two thousand and twenty. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our city, country, and the world. Whereas Dr. Carter Woodson initiated Negro History Week in February nineteen twenty-six, which expanded to Black History Month fifty years later during the National Bicentennial in nineteen seventy-six. And whereas the history of Aurora is fortified with the stories of African-Americans who have helped to shape our community from Reconstruction Era to Great Migration, both World Wars and Civil Rights Era, well into contemporary times. And whereas Aurora has countless trailblazing African-Americans and those who continue to lead our cities, such as Alderman Shakita Hartburns, the first African-American elected City Council, Ward Nine Alderman Edward J. Bug, Alderman-at-large, Sergeant Jenkins, and of course, myself, Richard C. Irvin, the first African-American mayor elected the city of Aurora. Whereas we, no significant contributions are made every day in Aurora by African-Americans as we recognize the work Aurora African-American Heritage Board is celebrating, the achievements of our community, preparing our youth for global leadership and honoring our past, present, and future at the Heritage Scholarship Dinner, will be held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. Now therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the city of Aurora. And I call upon all residents of Aurora to acknowledge and observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Let's make Aurora proud.
... reach of the members again this Friday night, February twenty-eighth, sixteenth, Canada Heritage Scholarship Dinner. Tickets are on sale, seats are almost out, but they're on sale until eight o'clock tonight. You gotta hurry up and get your tickets in right on the homepage of the city's website. Looking forward to honoring Pastor Julian Spencer as our African-American Leader of the Year, and Jerome Blazer, Cynthia Miller, and Herb Gill as the Mayor's Lifetime Achievement Honor Eats. Another round of applause for the African-American... And that concludes our presentations, Mayor and Council.
All right, up on the conclusion of our presentations, is there motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, February eleventh? A motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there motion to approve an appointed Sergeant at Arms for this meeting? We did, we did, we did all that. All right, I'm just... You guys got me so excited about that Black History Month, right, right? You know what? We're gonna go ahead to, um, sorry? Right, right, motion overturned. It's all over, you know? You know, it's time for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read the preamble, please, ma'am?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you read the first speaker, ma'am?
We have Troop Five-Zero-Zero-Seven-Four.
Gomber Elementary School Girl Scout Troop Five-Zero-Zero-Seven-Four.
Bella.
Celia.
Dylan.
Lily.
Lucy.
Summer.
Bronze Award. We're working on a Girl Scouts Bronze Award, which is a team project that is sustainable. The steps are building our Girl Scout Junior Team, exploring the community, choosing our project, making a plan, putting our plan in motion, and spreading the word.
Purpose. We are planting trees because we need more in our environment. We are losing trees due to deforestation and pests like the emerald ashbore. Animals are losing their homes. Trees built to pollution and give us more oxygen. They give us shade and help reduce cooling costs in the summer. Finally, they give shelter to our homes from the wind, which reduces heating costs in the winter.
The steps we are taking as a troop are meeting, researching, planning, presenting to you, and executing our project. For our funds and materials, we have the cookie money that we raised last year, and our budget is one thousand dollars.
Location, location and tree type. We would like to plant trees at locations like parks by Gomber Elementary, parked by Still Middle School, a small park, a large park. The type of tree, like the white oak, is, it is the Illinois State Tree. It was voted on nineteen seventy-three. Supplies needed that we will supply: trees, shovels, hard rig, gardening hose, knife or scissors, mulch slash compost, and tree soil. What we need from you: permission to plant trees, a location, locations to plant, types of trees we can plant, and when we can plant, and any local business information to purchase trees from if there are any safe apartments. And thank you.
Ladies, can I ask you a question? How old are you? Oh, ten and eleven? Wow, you guys did an amazing job. Give them another round of applause. Can I say, and I bet I speak on behalf of all the aldermen sitting up here, that you have our permission to plant as many trees as you'd like. And I'm sure we'll help you find some locations in Ward Nine and wherever you'd like to throughout the city. Thank you again. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Ray Hinch.
Good evening, Mayor Irvin and Alderman of this Aurora City Council. I'm retired Air Force Chaplain Ray Hinch, been a volunteer at Wayside Cross for six years. Our Lord Jesus states in Matthew twenty-five under the parrycapy titled "The Final Judgment." "When the Son of Man comes in his glory and the angels with him, he will sit upon his glorious throne. All the nations will be gathered in his presence. He will separate the people as the shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will place the sheep at his right hand and the goats at his left. The king will say to those on his right, 'Come, you who are blessed by my Father inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the creation of the world. I was hungry, you fed me. I was thirsty, you gave me a drink. I was a stranger, you invited me into your home. I was naked, you gave me clothing. I was sick, you cared for me. I was in prison, and you visited me.'" Now the righteous ones will reply, "Lord, when did we ever see you, hungry, thirsty, a stranger, naked, or sick and in prison, and visit you?" And the king will say, "I tell you the truth, when you did it, to one of the least of these my brothers and sisters, you were doing it to me with the opposite behaviors," Jesus concludes. And he will answer, "I tell you the truth, when you refused to help the least of these my brothers and sisters, you were refusing to help me." Mayor Irvin and the council will make hundreds of decisions regarding the city of Aurora during your tenures in office, outstanding, controversial, so-so, all opposed, all in favor, positive, negative, judicious, wise, ill-advised, good and poor. Mayor Irvin and the alderman of this council that supported the mayor by placing the children's playground equipment in the park across from Wayside Cross Ministries, thus placing registered sex offenders within the five-hundred-foot limit of limited living and restricted distance from the children's playground, I would suggest that the main word to describe your decision is shame. S-H-A-M-E, shame. Shame on your ego. Shame on your clearly obvious misuse of your public office as a public trust from God in order to benefit your constituency. Shame on refusing to those, to help these, the least of Jesus' brothers. And shame on refusing to help Jesus by turning your back on the ninety-two-year relationship with Wayside Cross Ministries and the restorative and transformational process of helping registered sex offenders to become useful and productive citizens of Aurora instead of inflicting great anguish and embarrassment and needless pain and suffering upon them. And as we said on our Pledge of Allegiance, shame for failing to ensure justice for all. And so, will you personally be escorting the registered sex offenders over the next several years, I'm sorry, next several months, from their residency at Wayside Cross to your neighborhoods so they can live on your street corners? Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Marcus Sabo.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak publicly about this issue. I know that you are not the ones directly responsible for implementing the Sex Offender Registry, that is the state. But I want to use this time to tell the truth to everyone about what this list really is and dispel the lies and untruths that I have heard over the last year. So here and now are some amazing facts about the Sex Offender Registry. The myth is that everyone on this list is some heinous vile predator. Nothing could be further from the truth. Yes, there are some people on the list who have done horrible acts in the past. It also contains many more people that were put on there for things just as being accused by a former wife or girlfriend of abuse, so-called Romeo and Juliet relationships, teenage sexting, and even playing doctor as a kid, or urinating in public or streaking. It contains people who have never spent so much as even an hour in jail, contains people whose only crime was committed over half a century ago. So just who is on this registry? We think there are now over one million people on this list in the U.S. We do not know exactly how many since the government agency in charge of counting this got over nine-hundred thousand two years ago and then stopped publishing the number, and they have not said why. But the damage done extends to many more people than that, as the person's family, spouse, children, and parents are exposed to the same banishment and stigma. In Illinois, it is estimated that one of every two-hundred-and-twenty-seven adult males is labeled a sex offender. That goes to one in every one-hundred in the African-American community. The sheer quantity of people on this list makes its usefulness as a public safety measure a mere fantasy at this point. The age most represented on the registry is fourteen years old. Think about that. There are more fourteen-year-olds on this list than any other age. Children as young as seven years old have been placed on this list and labeled as sexual predators. It is statistically much more likely that your own child will end up placed on the registry for something he or she does than be victimized by somebody already on it. Okay, so there are a lot of people on this list, including children, but are they dangerous? Studies show that they are not. Ninety-five percent of all sex crimes are committed by someone not on the Sex Offender Registry. They're committed by someone the victim already knows very well. They are committed by a teacher, a friend, a neighbor, or a family member. They are very rarely done by the so-called stranger danger. So if something were to happen, there's a ninety-five percent chance you were looking at the wrong people to prevent it. Those are not good odds. The recidivism rate of people on the registry is between three and five percent. Theft and robbery, drug crimes, gun and violence, and especially DUI arrests are much higher, some as high as forty percent. I ask you all to research this topic yourself and really see what the truth is and not go by what the media tells you to believe. And yet meanwhile, there was yet another shooting in Aurora less than two weeks ago. What are you as a council really doing to keep the citizens of the city safe? Thank you.
Clerk, call the next speaker.
St. Clair Gallagher.
Good evening. I'm St. Clair Gallagher.
Good evening. I'm St. Clair Gallagher. I am a board member and also community liaison for Simply Destiny since two thousand and sixteen. And I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to update you on what's happening with Simply Destiny. A lot of you have known Simply Destiny for the last seven or eight years as a dance team. And I, I have to tell you that we're a lot more than a dance team. There's two major components. One is the community awareness for regarding youth suicide and mental health issues. And we do that through parades, through community performances. We've started doing youth mental health first aid classes at our center. And then also we do ten hours a week of bilingual, community-based, after-school programming. And that means expressive dance, creative arts, developing competencies, which we know impact academic achievements. That's with memories, self-confidence, problem-solving, communications, team buildings. And we've added a parent group programming to help with improving communication between parents and their children. That is collaboration with Changing Children's World out of Geneva. So we have trained facilitators. And what I think is really unique is we have sixty-plus kids on a weekly basis coming to Simply Destiny, and we have somebody from every ward involved in Simply Destiny. So, as you can see, here's some of our kids. And we have to share, we're in a new location. We have just re-turned to downtown at one-twenty-two West Downer Place, which we have now not only a dance studio but a learning center. And so we have a ribbon cutting that is going to be on March ninth at six forty-five. We'd love to have you there. And we're also beginning hosting First Friday Teen Night to add to downtown programming. And though we are very, very thankful for the support that the city has given us through the Quality of Life Grant and individual aldermen, your continuing support and other funding sources, we still look to the community for fifty-five percent of our fundraising needs, of our needs, of our programs. So, and that means individuals, organizations, companies working with us. And with that, our event, our annual event coming up is our annual gala, which is a dance and dinner this year. With, we work with, partner with twelve community leaders to partner with our dancers to raise money for the program. So this year, historically, we raised, we challenged our teams to raise a thousand dollars. This year, we're challenging our teams to raise two thousand dollars, and I'm seeking support from the aldermen to be the first thousand dollars for each of our teams to go forward. So we, we are looking to have the aldermen provide...
Thank you, ma'am, that's the three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
There are no additional speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Yeah. You know, before we go on to mayoral appointments, we have some young folks here that are, like you said, ten and eleven years old. They probably want to get home and do a little homework and get ready for school tomorrow. So before we go on to the, you're like, no, you really want to sit here and hang out with us? You know, I, I don't blame you. We'd appreciate you staying with us. We appreciate the company. But if you guys would, you know, before we go on, I see your moms shaking your head, Joe, let's get out of here, we gotta get... So I'll give you guys a few minutes. Anyone else that wants to file out that was here as part of our presentations, we'll give you a few minutes to file out before we go on to the rest of the agenda. All right, as everyone, the last few folks file out, we'll go ahead with the rest of the, uh, the agenda. Let's go on to mayoral appointments. Clerk, can you read the first item under mayoral appointments?
Two zero dash zero zero three seven, a resolution appointing Guadalupe Cuevas, David Blancas, Elva Sparza, Laura Ayala, and Gil Rios to the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board.
Um, before we entertain the motion, if Guadalupe Cuevas is present, if you can stand and remain standing until we go on this. David Blancas, Elva Sparza, Laura Ayala, Gil Rios. Thank you guys very much for being here today. There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions or discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven-eighths.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Thank you guys very much. Now have a seat, but don't leave just yet because we're gonna ask you to come down and take a picture in just a second. Clerk, can you read the next item?
Two zero dash zero zero four three, a resolution appointing Shanita Thompson and Joseph L. Grisson III to the Aurora African-American Heritage Advisory Board.
Is Shanita Thompson and Joseph, Joe Grisson here in the room? All right. Well, you just remain standing. We had a motion made by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman, is that you, Alderman? Franco, Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being none, will, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven-eighths.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Thank you guys for your willingness to serve our city. Clerk, can you call the next item?
Twenty dash zero zero six seven, a resolution appointing Robert Shemansky and reappointing Paul Chavez Jr., Mike Kluber, and Terrence Lindsay to the Permanent Building and Fire Code Committee.
Do we have Robert Shemansky, Paul Chavez, Mike Kluber, and Terrence Lindsay present? If you are, when you stand up, we appreciate it. There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussion on this resolution? There being no questions or discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven-eighths.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Thank you, sir, for your willingness to serve. Everybody can meet me down front if you need to take a picture. All right, let's go on to the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the consent, consent agenda in full?
Nineteen dash one zero one six, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to execute the Engineering Services Agreement Supplement Number One in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents with H.R. Green Incorporated, four-twenty North Front Street, McHenry, Illinois, six zero zero five zero for the Paramount River Walk Promenade Project Phase Two Engineering. Twenty dash zero zero four five, a resolution authorizing the City of Aurora Police Department to enter into a contract with Valon Solutions LLC for the We Never Walk Alone Nationwide Peer Support Mental Health Professionals Network. Twenty dash zero zero five zero, a resolution to use NTI National Technologies, five one zero one Thatcher Road, Downers Grove, Illinois, six oh five one five, as a primary fiber vendor for doing fiber work for the City of Aurora and use Adesta LLC of Willowbrook, Illinois as the city's secondary fiber vendor. Twenty dash zero zero six one, a resolution to endorse the Legislative Action Program of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference for the 2020 Legislative Session. Twenty dash zero zero six six, a resolution accepting the improvements and maintenance security for Project Canvas, one hundred South River Street. Twenty dash zero zero six nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a not-to-exceed agreement for design phase engineering services in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars for the airfield pavement rehabilitation, Phase Three, Area One project with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated. Twenty dash zeros or eight zero, a resolution authorizing a contract with Swallow Construction Corporation, four-two-five-zero Lacy Road, Downers Grove, Illinois, six oh five one five, in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-five cents for the West Downer Place Sewer Separation Project located in Wards Four and Five. Twenty dash zero zero eight one, a resolution awarding the 2020 sanitary and storm sewer televising contract to National Power Rotting Corporation, twenty-five hundred West Arthington Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one two, in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents. Twenty dash zero zero eight three, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at one-two-four-five Corporate Boulevard. Twenty dash zero zero eight four, a resolution authorizing the application for grant funding in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Bicycle Path Grant Program. Twenty dash zero zero eight six, a resolution to approve a ratification to the existing contract with RJ Kuhn Plumbing, Heating, and Cooling Incorporated to add twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for repair and replacement services related to existing plumbing infrastructure at the Development Services Center. Twenty dash zero zero eight nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of bulk loads of unleaded and diesel fuels from Petroleum Traders Corporation of Fort Wayne, Indiana, not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Twenty dash zero zero nine one, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Primos Tacos Incorporated, doing business as Primos Tacos, nine-one-four Highland Avenue, Aurora, six oh five oh six. Twenty dash zero zero nine two, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class F City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from McCarty Mills Taproom Incorporated, doing business as McCarty Mills Taproom, one forty South River Street, Unit one oh eight, Aurora, six oh five oh six. Twenty dash zero one zero three, a resolution approving an agreement with District one twenty-nine and the City of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department for the Handle With Care Program. Twenty dash zero one zero seven, an ordinance calling for a public hearing and a joint review board meeting to consider the designation of a redevelopment project area and the approval of a redevelopment plan and project for the City of Aurora, Lincoln and Weston Tax Increment Financing District.
There's been a motion to approve by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Garza. Before we entertain that motion, are there any questions or motions to remove items from the consent agenda? There being no questions or motions to remove items, and there being a first and a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Alderman O'Connor? Eleven-eighths.
Motion carries, resolution, consent agenda is approved. Clerk, can you read the first item under unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero zero four two, an ordinance approving a text amendment to ordinance number three-one-zero-zero being the Aurora Zoning Ordinance to add Section eight point six dash four point five, limited but prohibited uses, to the BB Business Boulevard District.
Motion made by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman O'Connor?
I promise I will be brief. It is possible for me to be brief on occasion. I asked this to be unfinished. I wanted to make the statement essentially the same that I did several weeks ago in regard to the issue on cannabis distribution. That is, I continue to disagree with the public policy. I understand it is the law. I understand it is operating at this point, and we're not going to, I'm sure, change that. However, since the law provided for local control in many different ways, I have the opportunity to say I continue not to want to have this located in the City of Aurora. And this is an expansion of it in the sense of the areas where these businesses can be located. I think there has been adequate provision for providing for spaces for these businesses if they apply. I don't see any reason for expanding it at this point. I speak on my own opinion in that regard, and I speak on behalf of a number of citizens who have continually contacted me about this issue, so I will vote no.
Any other questions or concerns? Anyone else want to speak? Clerk, no other questions or discussion, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
No.
Ten-eighths, one-eighths.
Motion carries, the ordinance is approved. Is there a motion to accept and file the Treasury Report? Motion made by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills that's on the agenda? Motion made by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Will the clerk please, are there any discussions or questions on the bills or motions to remove items? There being no questions or discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins? Alderman O'Connor? Twelve, eleven-eighths.
Motion carries, the bills will be paid and are approved. There's been a motion to adjourn this meeting, filed by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, sit here in the dark. Motion carries, we are adjourned.